If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Okay. A notification for you has been posted, distributing compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. First agenda item we have is the approval of the minutes. And it's dated September 7th. Any comments or corrections to the minutes that any of you all have? Not I have one. On top of the page, it says, the meeting was on August 7th, our last meeting, but it was September 7th, so you can just correct that. There be no objection, other objections with the noted exception?
Just, just one thing. I think the motion that was made on, at the end of the meeting, was actually made by Dan, and I seconded it. I think we have it backwards.
Oh, okay.
Very important.
Did you, did you notice that?
Credit do what credits, you know?
Did you get that?
I'm pretty sure that it was a case where you asked Glenn to take a stab at, giving it, doing the motion.
Oh, that would happen?
I'm sure.
Maybe you're right, maybe you're right.
That's what I thought.
You got the video proof? That's fine.
Would you like to take a stab at it? You gave the motion.
Okay, okay. That's why I.
Too much heavy lifting for me, Glenn.
You started, that's what happened. You started and you said, do the heavy lifting.
My mistake, sorry. I was trying to recall that, too.
That's all right, but that's how he called it and brought it.
With the exception noted, the minutes, and there be no further objections, the minutes are approved. Okay, well, I'm going to next go into anything on the agenda. We only have one item, but if there's anything else that you want to add to the agenda at this time? No? Okay. I don't see any other citizens here, so citizen comments would be appropriate at this time. I don't think we have anything on the, is that a call-in? Okay. We are being videoed, but there's no call-in on that deal. So, we're going to move on then directly to our presentation of the recent state legislation and court cases that impact local government planning. Mr. John Deloach, senior staff attorney from the South Carolina Association of Counties, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
For coming back.
Yes.
Cool. Do you have a copy?
Yes, yes.
Make sure you have that. Anybody bring their copy who has them? Okay, so good. And also that. And if I didn't get a chance to give everyone a copy of these, this is the supplement that I'm going to be going over that goes with your land use guides. And this is a copy of Act 57, if you haven't seen this already. I'll be talking about this a little bit. I'm going to take one of those.
Pass these around.
What I'm going to talk about tonight is, I'm going to talk about one major legislative addition that was made this past session that does affect directly planning commissions and counties as a whole in relation to providing workforce housing, which has become an issue, especially down here in the Low Country, all up, up the coast as well, as well as some of the urbanizing counties in the upstate. And then, after I go over that, then we'll talk about a couple of significant court cases that were, have been decided in the last couple of years since the publication of the Land Use Planning Guide back in 2017. So let's start with Act 57. That is the legislative act publication. This is a pretty significant piece of legislation that was passed this past year. You'll notice that the primary sponsor was Tom Davis, who was the senator from this district. What this deals with largely is workforce housing, but the first part I want to go over is actually Section 6 of this act. This adds to the housing element you consider when you are either adopting a new comprehensive plan or you're doing updates to your plan. It adds a provision that when you are considering the housing element, before it is enacted, you have to get new input that you haven't had to get in years past. This input has to come from experts and professionals within the real estate industry, anyone with this real estate background, housing finance experts, all of those. You have to solicit their input on the housing needs of the county when you enact any additional amendments or new elements within the housing element. And that's going to be a responsibility directly of the planning commission, because of course the planning commission has the responsibility of developing the recommendations to county council for any amendments to the comprehensive plan. Yes, sir?
Sorry, just to make sure we're on the same page, are we really talking about Section 7?
Uh.
6, and that is just the definition of 47?
Yes, Section 7. I'm sorry.
That's all right, man.
Thank you. Other than that, the, the biggest area that this, that the Act 57 deals with is workforce housing. This gives certain counties, certain municipalities that have a significant degree of tourism, a new avenue to finance workforce housing. Originally, when they passed the local accommodations and the state accommodations taxes, the uses of that revenue had to be for tourism-related infrastructure, whether it's tourism, marketing, fire, police, first responders, because they do support the tourism industry, certain water and sewer infrastructure, because that again supports tourism. It now allows you to use up to 15% of your local accommodations tax revenue for the provision of workforce housing programs. And this act specifically defines workforce housing as a housing that is priced to be purchased by families that make between 30 and 120% of the area median income. So it's going to be the median income for Beaufort County rather than the state, which according to the Revenue and Physical Affairs Office, for at 20, for 2021, your median household income in Beaufort County was $72,000. So you're looking at between, selling, housing that would sell to families with incomes between 21,000, which would be the 30%, and I think 93,000 at 120%. And that's, that's a significant. Just a question. Lately, in the last several years, a lot of the applicants that we've been hearing from, some aspect of their proposal contains a statement about workforce housing or affordable housing. And what you're telling me is that we now have to have an expert testify regarding that application at the public hearing? Um, no, that would not be for the developer. This would be for the county to use their local accommodations tax or any combination of the local accommodation and the portion they receive from the state hospitality or accommodations tax revenue. This is strictly for the use of those funds. So if you're using funds for a private developer's project, then it has to be within those, those income. I'm sorry, I was going back a little bit further. When you explained that there's a need to get expertise from a realtor or somebody about... Yes, this is for your amendments to your housing element. Right, so there has to be, they then have to be at that meeting and testify accordingly, or you have to get advance information from them that you've complied with that particular complaint? Um, I think you can do both. I think you can get, you can solicit, and staff can solicit it when they're preparing the tax amendment. Okay. Or when you do public hearings, you can have them present at that time, as long as, as long as you are soliciting that input and it is, at least note, that within the information that you are putting together in terms of the minutes of meetings and things, as long as you have proof that you have solicited that expertise. Okay, thank you.
So I'm clear, you're talking about when you're making amendments to the comp plan, not necessarily an individual zoning case that you would have to have.
Yes, this is when you're doing amendments to elements, to element number six, which is the housing element of your plan.
In this?
Yes, comprehensive plan.
And this amendment has to be done prior to using the ATAX funds?
Yeah, that's completely separate.
Okay.
Yes, that's something, because if you're going to use ATAX funds, then county council has to enact a legislative ordinance allowing the use.
Okay.
May I ask, you've just annotated that we no longer are state-based, but rather county-based. What is the state numbers? You quoted the county numbers. Can you just give us a ballpark on this?
This is.
Must always be an advantage to Beaufort, it's a bit more.
Yes. Y'all, your, your median income.
Is higher.
For Beaufort County alone is higher than the state. I think the state, I think, was 59, because of course, you've got some very rural, poor counties that kind of bring those averages down, because I think those, I think the poorest county showed a median income of, I think, something like 21,000. But, yeah, Buffton, Hilton Head, you've, you have some areas that raise, raise that up. Now, y'all are nowhere near what some of the outlined municipalities around Charleston are. I think the highest I saw was Keewa Island, their median income, just Keewa Island, was like 130.
Oh, shock.
But that's, that's pretty much the, the crux of Act 57, is the state is looking at ways of providing workforce housing in a lot of areas. I, I know next Monday, we're doing our, or the association is doing its annual planning and zoning webcast for, statewide, for all planning and zoning officials and staff that need the continuing education credits. We are focusing half of that program on workforce housing, and I think the planning director for the town of Hilton Head is giving an update on a number of their projects, because I know they're, they're going to talk about the rezoning of Seafine Circle and the development of the North Point project right there at the head of the, the old toll road. Also, Greenville County is looking at several projects. We got a number of counties that are looking at ways of, of using ATAX revenues to, to do some funding, because one of the things that the act does provide is, instead of waiting to use on an annual basis your ATAX funds, it does allow you to, to leverage your ATAX revenue to pay bonds, if you want to use bonds, to finance projects quicker. Because the one thing with the act as it is now is you can only use ATAX revenue for workforce housing through December 31st of 2030, so you've got about six years realistically, because it takes, takes a little while to get county councils to enact a legislative ordinance to, to get it moving. So you've got about six years to use this. We anticipate probably, the general assembly is going to probably look at this again and do some tweaks and possibly extend it if it's, if it's necessary. All right, so the other legislative change that you've probably already discussed to some degree is back in 2020, the legislature enacted another element that was necessary to be added to comprehensive plans the next time you redo them, or if you are enacting a new one, and that is element number 10. That is the resiliency element. Back in 2015, you know, we had not only an unprecedented thousand-year rain event through much of the state, but also following on the heels of that, Beaufort, Hilton Head, the whole Low Country then had Hurricane Matthew and, what was the hurricane that came right after Matthew the next year? Irma. Irma. So the, so the general assembly looked at mitigation efforts to plan better for events like this, because what was found, especially in Columbia, because we had never seen rain at that, at that level. We had large areas of Columbia that just suddenly saw every creek quadruple in size. And it was, and it was discovered in working with FEMA, that there are certain areas that probably should have been in flood, flood plains, but weren't, because they had never seen flooding in those areas before, or if they were, they were minor. So, resiliency program kind of has two parts to it. You have the resiliency element that now the planning commission has to consider when they're amending or enacting a new plan, and that is, they, you now have to look at resiliency and mitigation efforts to better plan for natural disasters, rain events, flooding. And when you are looking at this plan, it requires you to do it in a more of a regional effort, where you, you really need to send notifications to any of your relevant adjacent jurisdictions, such your counties next to you, that's all your municipalities that are within the county, to notify them of the projects that you think are important when you are considering disaster mitigation efforts, of how to enact them and how to finance them. And you just have to provide notification to them, although the general assembly did kind of say that if you fail to do that, it doesn't invalidate the plan, doesn't give rise to a civil cause of action. It's just a way really to try to get planning commissions, counties, municipalities to all think in a regional kind of mindset when you're talking about resiliency and disaster The other thing that it does that's interesting, it's one of the few elements that says, not only do you have to consider it just in terms of a resiliency element, once you have just thought about this element on its own, you have to consider disaster mitigation, natural disaster planning in every other element of the comprehensive plan. So you have to think about it in terms of your housing element, your natural resources element, your transportation, all of those other elements. You now have to start at least considering disaster mitigation, flood, flood management efforts in all of those elements. The other, other thing that it does, the, the Resiliency Act back in 2020, is it created the State Office of Resilience. That is an office at the state level that, that works with emergency management, not only on a statewide basis to think about disaster mitigation and flood management, but it also has the ability to use funds to identify properties in specific areas that need to be purchased and kind of may put into a more public use. There are a number of properties throughout Columbia that FEMA and the new Office of Resiliency have pretty much purchased and demolished those houses, because they are now recognized as being in a, not only a flood plain, but in a natural flooding, flooding area, and that it's best that those properties be used just kind of as a, a green space, as an area to mitigate flooding and kind of impound water. I know the, the neighborhood in Columbia that I grew up in, all the way up until I went to college, there were about eight, eight houses in the lower end of the neighborhood that had been purchased and had been demolished. It also is, it provides funds for counties to use to provide some of those mitigation programs. All right, so that's the, that's kind of the legislative end. Let's talk about some of the cases that, these are going to be provided in your supplement. The supplement that you have is very easy to use, just that first section is the, the two legislative acts that I've already talked about. Starting part two, that is all of your new appellate court cases from the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court, as well as a few opinions that have been issued by the Attorney General's Office. All of those cases are broken down by the chapter in the book and the code section and page number within the book, so if you're ever, if you're ever researching in the book and you need to know, is there anything that's been updated or an appellate decisions come down, you can just flip to that supplement, know exactly which page you need to look at, and if it impacts what you're looking at. So, when it, when it comes to cases, there's one particular case that's, that came out earlier this year, that is a case called Anna Creations F.L. This comes out of the city of Myrtle Beach. The city of Myrtle Beach, as you know, I mean, this is kind of, this has been the family destination for nearly 70 years. It's where I went to the beach every year as a kid. You know, the, you have the, kind of the historic downtown area of Myrtle Beach, it's kind of that area all the way from, about halfway beyond the start of Ocean Drive, down through to the old pavilion, a little bit beyond that, to where the old historic residential section starts. Over the last, say, 20, 30 years, that area has started to develop some problem, problem areas, lot of tattoo shops, CBD and vape shops have been opening, tattoo parlors, and a few businesses selling a lot of sexually oriented, not merchandise, to a point that a lot of times families were starting to not only stop coming, but out, just very vocally complaining to city council, to the planning, planning officials. And so in 2018, the town council enacted the Ocean Boulevard Entertainment Overlay District. It put an, a zoning overlay over a 50-block area of what encompassed the traditional historic downtown. It's about quarter of a mile wide, about two and a half miles long, roughly a rectangle. But city council was very careful in describing this overlay district, how it encompassed and followed the contours of what was the historic downtown entertainment district. And that was important, because what happened is, within this overlay district, it create, it placed additional restrictions on the businesses within that overlay. Because as the Supreme Court pointed out, that not only was this a very kind of defined, well-defined district, is it actually encompassed about 10 different classifications, zoning classifications within the district. And it placed restrictions on the items that businesses within the overlay district could sell. It prohibited tattoo shops, any kind of smoking paraphernalia, vapes, CBD, and it also prohibited certain sexually oriented materials. And so it was, and what, all of those products were then immediately deemed a non-conforming product. And it gave a certain time period, I think a little less than a year, for these businesses to sell what little, what merchandise that was prohibited, sell that, and that, once that amortization period was over, they could not sell it after that. There were about 25 stores that were identified that would have been impacted. Just before the amortization period ended, nine of these 25 stores filed suit against the city. They filed both a state action and a federal action, claiming a lot of different things, including violation of equal protection and due process, and a federal claim of, of a, an unconstitutional takings under the Fifth Amendment. Because what, what they were saying is that stores outside of the overlay district were free to sell all of this material, but it was, but the stores within this overlay zone were prohibited from selling it. So they were set, they were claiming, claiming that there was a due, an equal protection protection violation in the fact that they were being treated differently than similarly situated um uh stores. The other thing they were um claiming a a due process violation because they said that the way that this overlay zone was created was arbitrary, um because it just was um, it was not a well-defined area, that it was encompassing too many different um um zoning classifications. Um, and that, of course, the federal takings was that they were taking their property by saying they could no longer sell these items that they had traditionally been selling in the past. This is what made this um overlay case a little bit different than a lot of times what you see uh in traditional overlay um arguments that they're being spot zoned because someone in the future can't do something, where in this case it's somebody is already doing something and they're prohibited doing it um in the future. So our Supreme Court pretty went through a very exhaustive analysis and um originally when it went to the circuit court, the circuit court dismissed everything. They said, first of all, it's not a taking, there, there is no due process violation because what city council did was fair, was a very organized step-by-step process. They said this was a well-defined overlay, that it had, it, there was a reasonable um reason for the city to do this. They, they had shown with a lot of evidence that not only were they receiving complaints from the very people they were trying to draw back to um Myrtle Beach and the downtown area, but they were seeing increases in crime. Um, and a lot of those, so problems associated with uh crime and the the negative impacts of the specific items and businesses that where they were prohibiting. So they said this was not a due process violation. They dismissed the protection violation because they said these nine stores were not being treated any differently than any other store within the overlay. Um, every, every business within the overlay district is being treated exactly the same. Um, you don't have to look at the fact that businesses outside the overlay aren't being treated the same way because um overlays have been recognized, at least at the federal circuit level, as a legitimate use of land use controls by local government. Um, I know our Fourth Circuit, which is the circuit that South Carolina is in, there was a case all the way back in 2018 that dealt with a similar overlay and not only did the federal court in that case summarily dismiss a developer's arguments on both spot zoning, the equal protection and due process violations, but they said that frankly, it is not the business of the federal courts to be dealing with strictly local government land use uh planning um questions. That is something for the state courts um uh to deal with. So I think at least certainly with the Fourth Circuit, it is a very tall hill for developers to attack, um not only general overlays, but the restrictions within them. Um, is most of the time, unless you have what's known as a suspect or a quasi-suspect class, which is basically going to be um a class that is arguing that they are discriminated against because of a uh a suspect class such as race, gender, um religious, um affiliate, protected status, the courts, if it doesn't meet those suspect class, they are, they're going to base everything on um a um reasonable um reasonableness, a reasonableness standard. If it was a suspect class, you would have, you would be analyzing everything under strict scrutiny, which is a much lower uh burden on to, on the appellants to argue. But if you are trying to argue um kind of what's called the rational basis, which is reasonableness, that's an incredibly high burden for appellants to argue because they have to argue that what the local government did to them is arbitrary, it's capricious, and there's no basis for a government to make the decision that they did. If the, um, if the government could show that there's a rational basis for enacting the overlay, then pretty much developer loses.
What I find interesting with this one is we've, we've been, since I've been on the cushion, we've dealt with a couple of overlays and protections and so on. But that was the interpretation of what the overlay meant. In this case, it's, the overlay comes in after the store's already there and then dissolves a, because now it is a violation of the overlay, there's no grandfathering of those particular types of outlets. No, it's a little bit different, a twist than what we've dealt with.
Yeah, because traditionally what you have is you have the local government enact an overlay district and then someone comes in and tries to argue that their use should be allowable even under this overlay because everyone else can do it. Um, but they are fully aware that the overlay is in place before they do something. Um, and if you read what the Supreme Court has said in Anna Creations is if, if you have knowledge of the overlay and the restrictions, it's almost impossible that our Supreme Court would allow it. Because if they're not going to allow it, if for a use that's already in place before an overlay is um enacted, they're certainly not going to be friendly to a question of a use that is not allowable within an overlay if the overlay is already in place before you even consider what you want to do. Yeah.
Is it unusual to prohibit a product rather than a use?
You know, this is one of the, the earliest of of this type. Generally, it's a land use. This is, it's a, it's unique that this is certain products. And I think part of that may be why the court didn't have as much of a problem because these are just probably one of 50 products that these stores will um um sell, especially some of the bigger ones, because you had Pacific Beachwear is one of the parties that's, as they, they've got chains of beachwear stores up and down um the strip in Myrtle Beach. I mean, they sell everything, t-shirts and bathing suits and towels and everything else. They're not going out of business because of this. If, if all you do is tattooing, yeah, you're not going to be able to operate within the overlay. You've got the rest of the city of Myrtle Beach and Ory County to operate. And I think that's maybe one of the reasons why the court didn't have a problem with this.
It's interesting just because it seems to open up a whole debate about what products are family-friendly. You know, all of a sudden you can think adult magazines, uh R-rated movies, et cetera, et cetera. And it, it gets a little interesting at that point.
Now, and that's one, one way I think city council was a, was um careful because I think the list of the prohibited items that were adult, I think was pretty well-defined. I think it's a limited set. It's not just defined as of sexually oriented.
But with the loss of revenue that the city incurred by allowing this in the first place, which precipitated them doing this, I mean, there had to be a significant loss of tourism.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why they ended up having to enact the overlay district is uh within the old historic district is they were seeing a lot of, a lot of people moving out. You didn't have the tourists coming into that area. They were going north, they were going south. Um, maybe part of that was the fact that probably just a few years before that, you had the um old pavilion being demolished, the um parts of the amusement park gone. But um, I mean, this was a, an area where in, in the old days, you would have just a constant stream of traffic down Ocean Boulevard through this area and you'd have parents with kids over there and after a while, you didn't see those kids, you didn't see the parents, you just saw basically adults and you saw teenagers. And so, yeah, I think probably there was a significant um income loss that they were Alright, the other um other case, and I think for those of you who were here in June, I touched on this one um back right before the pandemic. The um Court of Appeals issued an opinion in a Greenville County case that involved a planning commission up there. Um, like most counties, the planning commission had um authority to uh hear appeals from staff decisions on subdivision approvals, land development approvals. Um, the, there's an area kind of, I think, kind of on the more western side of Greenville County, um that has been largely rural for decades. The development of Greenville, especially the, the city area is moving further and further west into that rural area. Um, they had a pretty significant um subdivision uh plat application uh that would have, I think, almost quadrupled the number of homes just within that small area. Um, the staff had recommended denial. Uh, the um planning commission, developer then appealed to planning commission, planning commission approved it. Uh, in the Planning Act, within the section on planning commissions, um there are different sections that uh that deal with appeals of decisions of a planning commission. And it, there is a section that says a party in interest can appeal a staff decision to the planning commission. The next section then says the developer can file for pre-hearing mid uh mediation and then appeal to the circuit court, an adverse decision of the planning commission. So the question was, there was a, a group that was formed called Citizens for Quality um uh Quality, I'm trying to think what the name of it is, the Citizens for Quality Rural Living. Uh, and this was a uh a group made up of all of the surrounding homeowners and landowners that were upset with this new development proposal. And so as a group, they filed an appeal to the circuit court, not the developer. Developer, because he got his approval, he didn't um appeal it. The circuit court dismissed it, saying that this group didn't have standing. Um, and they, the circuit court relied on that language about the developer filing appeal with the circuit court and filing for, for um uh pre-trial uh mediation. The citizens group then filed an appeal to the South Carolina Court of Appeals. Court of Appeals reversed the circuit court, saying that if there was a question under the Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act, is because any party in interest has a right to appeal to the planning commission from a staff decision, that that language should also give them standing to appeal a decision that is adverse to them to the circuit court. So what the court then said was that it remanded back to the Greenville County Circuit Court to decide whether they were a party in interest. And I have yet to find a decision out of the circuit court whether they accept they were um a, a party in interest. Um, party in interest is generally um kind of broad, is if you can show that you have a, the real potential for injury from a decision, then you're going to be a party in interest. And I think what this circuit court's going to have to do from now on is when you have these interest groups, especially if they are the adjacent landowners, if there is enough opinion from real estate experts, um anyone with knowledge of the real estate industry, if they can show that they're going to have adverse um impacts on, say, their land values, then I think the circuit court's almost going to have to say they're a party in interest. The, the courts are very careful to say, however, that the general public is not a party in interest. So if it's just, it's just people out there that they don't like development, if they can't show an injury, they're not going to be a party in interest. And that's something that, I bring this up because I think as a planning commission, any like zoning boards, anything, I think you have to start looking, especially if you've got these interest groups that are appearing before you, you're going to have a question going forward is, are they a party in interest? Are they going to be able to appeal your decisions if they don't like it? Um, some of the other cases that we have, um, we have, um, there's an Attorney General's opinion from, uh, I think last year or the year before. It's interesting because you had um question of when a planning commission makes a recommendation or updates amendments to any, any of the ordinance, whether it's the um uh comprehensive plan, whether it's a zoning ordinance, the land development regulations, is what can county council, city council, what can they do with that recommendation? Do they have to accept it or reject it first and then separately amend it um later? Attorney General is saying generally because the councils, whether it's city or county, they are legislative bodies, they have all of the power that encompasses a legislative action. So um they can, they can accept it, you can, they can, they can accept your recommendation, they can reject your recommendation and send it back to you for further uh recommendations, or they can accept and modify at, at the same time. Um, they don't have to reject it and ask you to um reconsider it uh with, with amendments that they recommend. They can go ahead and they can amend it um with whatever amendments they want. Um, the other case um to look at from this year, um The other case to look at from this year is an interesting case out of the town of Simpsonville, again, up in Greenville County. This is a case that, if you're ever bored and you just want something entertaining to read, get ahold of a case called, I think it's Lockaby versus Town of Simpsonville and the Simpsonville Town Mayor. It's a town council member that is becoming a bigger issue every month. I know y'all have it here with certain citizenry, not going to name any names, that are very Some councils are having the problem now that not only is it to citizens, it's one or two individual members. Town of Simpsonville had this one member that used to argue so much that it got to the point where meetings couldn't continue. So Town of Simpsonville amended their rules to allow not only the removal of an individual member of the public, but an individual member of the body for conduct so unbecoming that a meeting could not continue, that they are so disruptive. They finally, this one meeting, and the court was very careful, they actually printed some of the transcript from the minutes of the fight between this council member and the mayor, to the point where finally a deputy was called to have her removed. That transcript alone is worth reading. The mayor, as the chairman or presiding officer of this body, on motion by a member, had this member removed from the meeting. The member, of course, not liking that, filed suit. So really, that case kind of answered the question that we had been waiting for, finally to say that legislative bodies, whether it's county council or city council, because discipline is a part of the legislative function of the body, the body can remove a member from an individual meeting. The Attorney General had already said he thought possibly that this was authorized, but went further in saying that you needed to be careful because you could only do it from that particular meeting, you cannot bar them from future meetings, because in his opinion, that would be affecting that person's appointed or elected term of office, and you don't have the legislative authority to do that, only the General Assembly can. So you can, if you want to, as hell, be boisterous in a meeting, chairman could have you removed from the meeting, but they can't bar you from future meetings.
That's my question. Another thing. You mentioned legislative bodies.
Yes.
We're an advisory board, too, in a legislative body. We're not a legislative body in se. But we've had incidents where we've had people being very boisterous, I can recall a specific one, when we're doing the comprehensive plan.
Although you're not a legislative body, you are a quasi-judicial board created and appointed by the legislative body, and you have authority under the Comprehensive Planning Act directly to adopt your own rules of business.
Yes.
So if you want to have the authority to remove a member of unbecoming conduct, you need to amend your rules to allow it, and you need to have process for it. And I would say, make it a motion, make it a decision of the body, and that you as chairman, you need to have a neutral third party, like a deputy, remove them from that meeting. That's the same process that I would use if you needed to remove a member of the public, is I would never have someone on staff or, God forbid, you or a member of the body do it themselves. I would have a deputy do it.
Well, I just wonder if we can make him put it on an orange jump shoot. DOC Department of Corrections.
All right. The other, the other thing that is, that came out of that meet, out of that decision that I think is a stroke of luck for us, is that the Court of Appeals also recognized that you as chairman, if you ordered the removal of someone, the decision of the body, that's a legislative act, but you, your actions would be administrative. But the court said, under the Tort Claims Act, administrative actions in furtherance of a legislative act still retain legislative immunity in the Tort Claims Act, which legislative immunity, just like quasi, our judicial, quasi-judicial immunity, that is absolute. That's not one of those that says that it's immune unless done in a grossly negligent manner. It is a complete legislative immunity.
Wow. John, what was that case again? I didn't see it in here, so.
Lockaby versus.
Lockaby, Lockaby versus Town of Simpsonville. Yeah, I didn't put it in this guide because it actually doesn't correspond to anything within the book. That's more of a case for the Attorneys Institute that I'll do next week. All right, but I've got a couple more minutes. I want to scare y'all with one thing. And I think for those of you who were here in June, I may have touched on this, but I want to talk a little bit about social media use. Something happened down in the town of Georgetown that you need to be aware of. For those of you who have been in South Carolina long enough, I know y'all are probably familiar with Georgetown Steel, the old steel mill, right down on the waterfront there and within the town limits of Georgetown. It was bought several years ago by Liberty Steel. The Town of Georgetown zoning ordinance provides, they amended their zoning to remove heavy industrial uses like the steel mill from that area of Georgetown, which immediately provided that the steel mill was a non-conforming use. But of course, it was grandfathered and could continue. However, their zoning ordinance provided that if a non-conforming zoning use ceased operations for more than 12 months, it was no longer considered to be grandfathered and was now a non-complying use in that zone, and it had to cease. That's, a lot of times, that is a general tactic within some zoning ordinances to amortize out uses, that you can either do an amortization of number of years it has to cease, or provide a mechanism that if it ceases a use after a certain number of months, that it loses its grandfather provision. Town of Georgetown amended that prior to 2019. We all know what happened in 2020. Georgetown Steel, they had to shut down because of the pandemic. They shut down for a little over 13 months. So they, when they went to reopen, were told that they were non-compliant. They then appealed, requested a variance on the basis that this was a national and state emergency, that they were shut down largely because of the governor's executive order that had been renewed a couple hundred times over a little over that year. The problem arose when the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, who was on record as disliking the steel mill, she was of the opinion that it should be bulldozed and that property was ripe for redevelopment in a much more friendly way to downtown Georgetown. Developers wanted that property. And she made it known that she was an opponent of the steel mill, not only in the press, but all over her private social media page. The problem with that is, when you have a steel mill, you have the Teamsters. The union president filed not only lawsuit against the town, against the zoning board, against her, but then filed an ethics complaint against her with the Ethics Commission. Problem with that is the Ethics Commission said that her actions didn't fall within the Ethics Act, because the Ethics Act really only deals with actions which are in furtherance of an economic interest on the part of the public official. So the Teamsters pulled their complaint. However, if it's not covered under the Ethics Act, it becomes a tort. And the problem with torts is that because her actions, it's clear that she intentionally was making those remarks on her, on her private Facebook page, and most likely, she would not be protected under the Tort Claims Act because those were intentional acts. And intentional acts are not covered under Tort Claims Act protections, just like criminal actions are not covered. So not only is there not protections under the Tort Claims Act, that means they could go after her personally, and she would be personally liable. So I want to end by just saying, be very careful as a public official, if you are making comments either on social media or to the press in your personal capacity. If you are, if you get questions from the press, I hope that you have a process on how you answer those and do so in your public capacity.
We tell them to call in.
Because as long as it's within your personal capacity, you generally will have quasi-judicial immunity. And again, that's one of those blanket immunities that you just can't summarily waive. So, any other questions before I finish up? Yes?
Okay, I may have missed something. Has that case been decided?
It's pretty, that one got settled, because the steel mill is still in operation.
Okay.
And she's no longer chair.
And the second question, you had mentioned before, there's a program, I believe, Monday?
Yes.
Now, I'm, she may have received it, or it may have gone into junk mail. Are we supposed to receive notification of those programs so we can watch them on the screen and?
You should. If we, if we have your email in our system, you will automatically get an email. If not, Robert, you should get an email with information on it. Whoever we have in our database for the county will automatically get it.
You can register with.
You can still register. It's available on our website at sccounties.org. Just look for, there is a tab at the top, Trainings, or Education and Trainings. You'll see the, it's November 13th. It is in the morning, so if you are working and can't attend, it will be available within a couple of days where you can watch it afterwards. And all of our trainings that we, that are planning and zoning related, as long as you are registering with your email address, once you finish, it should automatically generate a certificate for you. And it was, and it's a three-hour program, so it'll cover your entire three hours for the year.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, just.
What would it take to make it mandatory for county councils to have mandatory training in planning and zoning?
General Assembly would have to amend the Home Rule Act to require it.
Okay. I'm on county council, but it disappoints me how some county councils vote on different things that the planning commission has had classes on and they haven't ever had a class on. Just, that's my editorial comment for the moment.
I will say that we cover planning and zoning requirements pretty in-depth if the county council member is taking the Level One Institute of Government class.
If they take those, yeah. If they don't take those.
And we encourage them, even if they're not taking institute, to view some of those trainings.
I just want to say thank you for your being here.
Well, well done.
Sharing with us some of the latest regulatory changings and amendments at the state level. We're in the process of trying to update our rules of procedure, which were last updated in 2004. We've submitted to redevelopment our recommendations for those updates. You've certainly given us a couple additional things to think about, and we will, because ultimately, what we put forward has to be approved by county council. I appreciate your time and doing this, and I hope you all have access to the SCAC website and have a code, you can access any kind of training program you think about in planning. It pretty much lays it out for the calendar year, isn't it?
Yes. And for those of you that need it, my email address is jdeloache@scac.sc. And if you want to make sure that you get into our database, if you'll just send me your information, I will give it to Jennifer Hayworth and make sure it gets put into our YM database, so that when we do have trainings, that you'll automatically get notified of Because that three-hour webcast, we do that every year. I think we're probably going to move it into the spring, because I think having it in November has been a problem. And I'm trying to get it to where we have also available in the afternoons, because we traditionally have always set it at nine o'clock in the morning. And I know most appointed officials have jobs outside of this.
I'm assuming we can take an hour's worth of credit for the training we just received?
Yes. And when I get back into the office on Wednesday, I'll create a certificate and I'll send it.
We're getting near the end of the year, and we need to make sure we get all the training done.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yep. If y'all have any questions after I leave, feel free to email me.
Thank you, John. I'm going to go to Chairman's report, and a couple of things I just want to do very quickly. I want to introduce the public who might be watching, or those who will see the video at some future time, to our newest commissioners, Pete Cook, raise your smile at the camera, or whatever happens. I think so. And Eugene Myers, Gene Myers. And then to you, to Councilman Alice Howard, who is our liaison to county council and very diligent in keeping us aware of what things going on and relaying our messages to county council.
I want to thank all of y'all for your dedication and volunteering to do it. It's been an exciting past year, and probably will continue to be in the future for the planning commission.
Okay, a couple of the quick things. Our meeting in December is indicated, because we don't have any applicants that have come forward, and the deadline was today. So we will, this is our last meeting before January, we will put out with these minutes a copy of the proposed 2024 schedule for meeting, and so we will peruse that. I was hoping that some future date that we've been offered by the chairman
I was hoping that some future date that we've been offered by the chairman of the Green Space Committee to do a presentation on green space presentations. He was hoping you could do it in, in November, December, he's not available in November now, we're not going to be available in December. So perhaps next year, or we can have one of our staff people present it. Our councilperson, Alice Howard, is also on that committee, and it's newly formed, and it's moving fast and furious toward its first five applications. So more to be coming on that, I think you'll find it very interesting. I've been told that we will see an update to the Comprehensive Plan updates that have been generated through the last two years, maybe perhaps in January, just ahead of the retreat that county council takes. I think it's some great things that have been accomplished that we want the county council be aware of. So that's it. Anybody have anything for the good of the cause? Anything else you want to discuss? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.